It is seven o'clock or just after seven o'clock on January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can everyone please stand in Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. Roll call.
Councilwoman Cohen. Uh, ca- councilwoman Janjua.
Present.
Councilman Mustakis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Present.
Mayor Edels- uh, Mayor Stegler.
Present. Uh, public announcement.
Uh, in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice this meeting in the township council was provided in the following manner. On January thirteen, two thousand twenty one, advance written notice this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the Mount Laurel Municipal Center, and copies were sent to the Burlington County Times, the Mount Laurel Sun, and the Carrier Post.
Uh, approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Approval of the bill list.
I make a motion to approve.
Hey, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Resolutions twenty one dash R dash forty one.
Amending twenty one R thirty two, setting meeting locations because of COVID nineteen pandemic. This is setting our meeting, this meeting and the two meetings in February to Zoom.
And we'll, of course, keep revisiting it, obviously, as pandemic numbers come in and, and try to do what is most safe for everybody on council as well as the public. So, uh, can I have a motion to approve twenty one dash R dash forty one?
I'll make a motion, Steve, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Resolution twenty one dash R dash forty two.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Willingboro Township for the provision of animal control services. The township does not have in-house animal control. Willingboro Township does. We do a shared service with them yearly. Um, this is for stray dogs and cats, uh, that are in the town.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Resolution twenty one dash R dash forty three.
That guy. Mom! We're not muted.
Mount Laurel Township Resolution Authorizing Release of Performance Guarantee for Liberty Properties Limited Partnership Block one two zero one point zero three, Lot One SP number six six nine zero A. This is a bond release at the recommendation of our township engineer.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right.
Sorry. Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Resolution twenty one dash R dash forty four.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Mount Laurel to determining that Marin Affordable Developers LLC project on Marin Highway provides for and meets the affordable housing need of the Township of Mount Laurel. And I'll, uh, let the solicitor explain.
Sure. Um, this particular developer applied for, uh, the affordable housing, uh, tax credits at nine percent. Uh, they were not one of the seven finalists this year, so now they're applying for a four percent tax credit through the federal government. And this is one of the steps they need to, uh, make that application.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty one dash R dash forty four?
I move to approve resolution twenty one dash R dash forty four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Twenty one dash R dash forty five.
Resolution authorizing the cancellation of a grant. This was a grant that we were awarded during COVID that was, uh, that's the state had rescinded. We didn't, um, it was a drinking and driving grant that hit during COVID, the early part of it. Um, so it wasn't worked, so we need to cancel the grant for audit purposes.
Do you have a motion to approve twenty one dash R dash forty five?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Twenty one dash R dash forty six.
Resolution supporting a community solar project in Mount Laurel Township, and I'll refer to the, for explanation.
Sure. The, um, state of New Jersey is, has a solar project initiative called, uh, the Community Solar Program, which allows companies to find solar locations within communities throughout the state and to, uh, apply for these grants, which would, it's different than other solar projects we've seen in the past. In this situation, the solar company produces electricity that sold back into the grid. And, uh, based on how many homes that they can power with that, uh, they're allowed to reach out and uh, communicate with, with residents on a first come, first served basis to sell power at discounted electric rate. This particular company is guaranteed a twenty percent reduction in bills and, uh, fifty one percent of their, um, individuals have to be from low and moderate income housing. So it's a, a benefit to, um, Mount Laurel's less fortunate as well as creating a green project within the town.
And in your, uh, your opinion, George, any, any downside to this? This seemed like a really good idea, uh, when presented to us and uh, we, we kind of all thought about it and, and looked at it. Would you, in your opinion, any downside to this, uh, project?
No, not to this particular project. We had a second applicant come in and they weren't willing to guarantee the twenty percent. Uh, they were looking at somewhere in the range of ten to fourteen percent. And, um, we did not put that resolution up just because we didn't want to create confusion with some residents getting twenty percent and some getting some less than that. So if a company wants to come forward with another project, uh, they know that the mark is twenty percent in Mount Laurel.
George, just to jump in on a question, if the fifty one percent isn't met and we don't meet their criteria, what, what happens then?
They will most likely be able to then sell it to other low and moderate income housing outside of Mount Laurel, but for, um, the project that they're considering will power about three hundred homes. So that's, uh, you know, a hundred and fifty-two, um, low and moderate income homes would, would fall into that. Um, there's certainly, uh, enough of those homes within the town that they're going to be able to find those.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a motion to approve twenty one dash R dash forty six.
I'll make a motion too.
Rosie, you take it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Ordinances for first reading, ordinance twenty twenty one dash one.
Calendar year twenty twenty one model ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank NJSA forty A colon four dash four or five dash.
Do I, do I have a motion to, uh?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
You have to do for, um, first reading.
Mr. Mustakis, oh, if you can make the motion for introduction with the public hearing date of January twenty seventh, and I'm sorry, publication date of January twenty seventh and a public hearing date of February eighth.
Great.
Is that your motion?
That is, George. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash two.
An ordinance vacating Whitman Ave, the Piper Street within the Bridgeway track.
I'll make a motion, uh, publication date January twenty seven, twenty twenty one, public hearing date February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Miss- Mustakis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash three.
An ordinance providing for stormwater management.
I will make, I would like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty one dash three on first reading with the publication date of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, and a public hearing date of February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Cohen.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janjua.
Aye.
Councilman Mustakis.
Aye.
Mayor Stegler.
Aye. Public participation.
I don't. If you just raise your hand if anybody wants to talk, okay, I'm gonna unmute Mr., Mr. Falcone. Hold on, I just have to.
I wanna unmute myself. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate, uh, Mayor Stegler on your election and the other members of the council, new, good luck to you and, and your tour of duty here in Mount Laurel. Um, I wanted to resurface the, um, the firewood proposal that I had made last fall for some discussion, but before that I had a, a question for perhaps Meredith and the, and our new mayor. Um, nearly, in, in the late fall of last year, I had applied for a position on the MUA. I guess the MUA Oversight Committee there, and I said in the application, Meredith, you had sent me the form to fill out, and I added my resumes and so forth to that. I'm a registered professional engineer and a civil engineer. I thought I could be of some help with that. I never heard anything back from the township. I, I guess my first question is whatever happened with that? Who was selected for that MUA position?
So the, uh, appointments are done at the reorganization council meeting, which is the first meeting that takes place in, um, in January. So all of the board appointments were made that first meeting in January.
I mean, from the standpoint of just closure, do you think it's probably a good idea for the township to at least respond to people that submit a, uh, an application to be considered, maybe an email or something like that, or do you feel that that just that council meeting is enough? I mean, for people that responded, never heard anything back.
Sure, I, I, that's a great suggestion and, and, and I can definitely, uh, that's my fault. I can definitely notify the applicants that applied to me that weren't selected, uh, you know, uh, thank you for applying and, and, you know, your application does stay on file in case there's a vacancy because somebody either moves or passes away or resigns from a board during the year. Um, so your application, even though you weren't selected, does stay on file. I, I always keep, uh, applications on file for at least three years, um, in case anything becomes vacant.
Thank you, Meredith. A related question for our, our new mayor, what are the, I mean, from the standpoint of application, applying for a position like that, what would be the qualifications for an individual to be selected to serve on the MUA Oversight Committee?
Well, I think we look at a lot of, uh, qualifications, resumes, obviously, one of them, what you bring to the table in terms of professionalism or professional experience. Um, I think we also look at, uh, diversity. I know this council wants to make diversity a, a very important issue for us to make sure that there's better representation. And it's also an opportunity to bring in, uh, a different, uh, ideas of, of, of leadership, individuals that want to come in, perhaps add different perspectives and, and new ideas.
Is Ken Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Does someone else have a comment there? Okay, thank you, Mayor. I don't want to take too much time up. I did want to resurface that. We were talking about that firewood uh, proposal last fall, and there seemed to be some general interest on the, uh, on the council and from our former, uh, mayor, uh, Erwin Edelson about maybe implementing that. And George, if you recall, you even said it seemed like a good idea and you weren't seeing any legal restraints, at least at the time. The idea here would be to allow residents of Mount Laurel to go into public lands in Mount Laurel where trees have fallen down, not, not standing trees, trees that have fallen down and have died, and allow residents to go in and, um, take that wood out, cut it up, and take it home and use it as firewood. It would help, uh, residents, you know, have firewood during the winter time, but also would eliminate, the bigger issue was it would eliminate underbrush in the public lands, which could catch on fire and cause fires in the township. And as we all know, it's, we're densely populated, a, a far, a, a forest or a woodland's fire starting in Mount Laurel could quite quickly move into residential areas. So that was my proposal, which seemed to generate some interest last fall. And of course, because we had the elections in November, the discussion was kind of tabled there. And I was just wondering if it's time to resurface that, um, initiative again with the current council and our new mayor. And that's, that's what I wanted to, any comments or thoughts on that?
No, I, I appreciate that.
Mayor Stegler or our new council members?
Yeah, I thank you for bringing it, uh, back to our attention. Um, definitely want to talk about it with the, the rest of council, see what they're thinking. Um, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm, uh, thinking about this environmental commission that we want to establish here in Mount Laurel. Um, sometime late February, early March, I think this would be a really good idea, uh, for that new commission to be able to address uh, research and make the resolution recommendation to us. Um, but as an overall council, I, you know, I think we should also, you know, discuss it and, and get everyone's opinion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, my internet connection is kind of coming in and out here, so I'm, I'm getting about maybe sixty percent of what you're saying. I, I think what I heard you say is in February, March, you're going to try to surface this issue for some further discussion.
Yeah, we're, we're having a further discussion with this new, with the new council members. Um, but off the top of my head, you know, knee jerk hearing it once again, uh, we're going to be establishing an environmental commission that I think this might be a really good first task, one of the first tasks for that commission to look into and make the recommendation to council. But I, I really do appreciate you bringing it back to our attention because uh, I remember the first time you did it, I was intrigued by it, um, and, and wanted to learn more.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Meredith.
No problem. Thank you. I see Brian Sharp has his hand up.
Hello, hey, Mayor, uh, Stegler, how are you and the rest of the council? Uh, my question is about the ordinance twenty twenty one dash three that I know we're having the public hearing on the eighth. But during that public hearing, where we actually have, um, professionals present this to see what's this really going to impact as far as businesses are concerned in Mount Laurel? Is it, I, I assume it's going to have a good environmental impact, but, you know, it's a very lengthy, detailed, uh, report you've got here, so somebody can summarize it, make it.
Sure, we can. I can arrange to have Bill Long and George Morris also worked on the, the ordinance. The ordinance brings us into, uh, the current guidelines that are required under stormwater management, um, at the FEMA level. So, uh, this is actually to make sure that the township's in compliance. Um, but I can arrange to have, uh, Bill Long, uh, attend our next, uh, council meeting to answer any questions during the public.
Okay, thank you, Meredith.
No problem. I have Mr., uh, Andrew Gao.
Yeah, Gauss is correct.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. It's the non-Anglicized. Um, so my question, um, is similar to Mr. Falcone's about the application process. I, I had also applied to, uh, the zoning and planning boards pretty late, uh, last year. And I also didn't hear anything back. Is it customary for there to be no interviews for people? Is that something that's new?
So, so correct me if I'm wrong, Meredith, because I can't speak for more than the, the time that I was on, on council. Um, the beginning of the year, no, uh, I'd break before reorganization, just because the influx of applications that we've received. Um, during the year, if we're, we have to reappoint, then we normally do maybe an interview. Um, but, uh, considering the amount of applications we received, and it was quite a lot, uh, we just decided, um, with, with our township manager and, and everybody on board, um, our next move. But, I mean, to your, to your, to your point, sometimes it depends, but it's, it really varies.
So, how many people were interviewed per board position that was appointed?
There's, there's, there's no requirement that requires interviews to take place. Under our form of government, interviews are not a requirement.
Was it done in the past?
Uh, yes.
So why is it not being done now? I'm just curious as to why things are changing?
I mean, it, it, things can't, I mean, like I said, there's no requirement by law that requires there to be interviews for board appointments.
So you could say that the new process might not be open. You might not get the best candidates because you're not interviewing, you're just going, you're not interviewing every possible candidate, you're just going off of a piece of paper?
Hmm, I definitely didn't say that. That can be your opinion, but that's not my opinion.
Okay, uh, were previous, uh, board members, I, I noticed that some board members weren't reappointed. Were they ever contacted about their appointments being up? Or were, did they submit applications, just didn't hear things, or the council wanted to go a different direction?
Previous, uh, board members that had served were, uh, were asked by their board secretaries if they wanted to fill out an application for consideration.
And that's the extent?
Yes.
So not necessarily all previous board members were interviewed? Again, they just could have submitted an application, you could have, that was the end of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I, uh.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian Katz, oh, uh, you just, thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. I appreciate it. Um, congratulations to all of the new incoming, uh, council members, uh, and best of luck to you. Um, I too did also submit, uh, an application for the library this past, um, over the Christmas holiday and didn't hear anything back. And I think there's been enough discussion. I think I understand the process and what it was before. Um, to be constructive, I'd like to recommend or consider, have you consider creating a pipeline? Um, there are retired professionals like myself and others in the community that want to participate and help. And I think it makes some sense coming away from this to think about if our governance structure would allow for some type of a pipeline so that when we make some changes, we've got people lined up. They've been interviewed, we know what their backgrounds are, and we can get them, you know, helping out.
Yeah, and I, I just, I appreciate that, uh, question, Brian, uh, Brian, the statement. Um, yeah, I think that, you know, this process as we're going on, we're, we're trying to redevelop this, uh, as, you know, it goes on. And in, you know, we, in the past, we didn't do interviews before reorgs. I don't recall having been sitting in an interview. But regardless of that, you know, I think that's, it's a fair point that you made and as well as Mr. Falcone in, uh, in contacting applicants, uh, regardless of, you know, whether they get selected or not, for first, that we've accepted their application and that they're under consideration, then what ultimately the council decided. So I, I do appreciate that statement, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I make a comment to this? Uh, I served on the library board for seven years. I was never interviewed. Uh, I was asked by the library director to apply, which I did. I sent him my resume and I was never interviewed for the position. Uh, just putting it out there. Um, uh, there are a few other people I know who also didn't ever receive interviews or replies in the past. So, um, you know, I'd like to change the way we do things too. I'd like to, you know, make sure that people are notified if they will or will not be appointed or reappointed. Um, going for, going forward, but I can tell you that there is a history of not everyone gets interviewed either. Thanks.
And to your point, Councilwoman Cohen, like that's, you know, I guess what, what we're hearing really is we, we need a better, uh, system in place when we're examining these and, and set up a nice process that we follow every year. And I think that's a, it's not a bad, uh, suggestion, but, you know, I appreciate your, your insight on that and being on the boards and not receiving one for many years and not having an interview. Um, you know, or being contacted prior. Um, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, it, it's part of any succession plan, any, you know, organization should have pipelines and
Yeah.
this is just good governance, that's all.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Brian.
Mr. Cortez?
Hey, Mayor, thank you very much. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Fine, thanks. So, um, so I, I, I had the pleasure of, uh, serving on the, um, playing board committee for the past six years. And in the last two years, I had the honor of being the, um, the committee, uh, chairperson. Um, so I, I, so again, you know, similar to what was just said by, by the others, uh, last few minutes. Yeah, I really like, and, and to address this to Councilwoman Cohen, I was interviewed, uh, when I, you know, for the position. And, um, you know, I, I, I know that large degree. You campaigned much about transparency. And, um, you know, within the committees and the boards. And again, I think, I feel that, you know, not getting a, and I, I did reapply, and not getting any feedback or any notification of not being accepted. You know, I, I kind, I kind of feel, you know, feel a little insulted by that. I served the, um, the people of Mount Laurel for, again, the past six years. And not having any consideration for the, for reappointment, uh, like I said, was rather, rather insulting. And especially again, as, as, you know, as the new council, uh, feels like they want to provide some more transparency. I, I just don't understand that the very simple act, you know, couldn't be, couldn't be performed.
Sure. Well, Joe, I thank you for your, your service to your community. I, look, I, I'm, I firsthand experience, it's not easy. And, and I appreciate, and this was an overall tough call. Uh, you were absolutely under consideration, as were everybody that applied um, at, at, at length. Uh, but, you know, going back to what others had said, uh, you know, you're right. I mean, there's a process that I think we could do a better job at, and, and we're going to visit that as a council and as a township.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Nikki Sampson. I just, you just need to, uh, accept unmute.
There, sorry about that. I do this all day, I should note, I apologize. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to our new town council and speaking on the board process. Um, just speaking kind of from a personnel perspective and a hiring perspective, I do welcome the, the changes of at least notifying people that they, their application's been accepted and possibly, um, the status of their application, whether they're accepted or not at the end. I think now all of this criticism, all the constructive criticism, I'm sure our board will take, our council will take going forward. The one thing I'd like to talk about, um, is that I want to congratulate the new town council because having lived here since nineteen seventy-nine, I actually, this was one of the first times I've actually seen active, um, solicitation of board members to the various boards in town. Um, and additionally, I'm wondering whether or not our, is our website now going to have the names of board members because it was in the last, especially with the Wawa issue, particularly frustrating. I had to, and it was very responsive, Meredith, your, your staff was very responsive. But I had to email to find out who is on our board. And I don't think in a town this size, we should have to guess who are the members of our board. It should be in all, it should be on our website. That transparency is something that all residents should know, and they should have emails that if we need. That transparency is something that all residents should know, and they should have emails that if we need to reach them as members, if that's within the law. Maybe their Mount Laurel Township website, so their business web, you know, business emails. But I think they should be accessible to the community, and up until now, I have not found that they are. And it was a guessing game as to know who served on these boards. People served five, six, seven years. We had no idea unless we actually emailed the township who these people were. What is the township, I guess this is to the mayor, what is the council planning to do to make the names now that we have new members of every board, or some old members of every board? What's the plan moving forward so that all people in town know who serves on what board?
Listen, Nikki, I think that's a great suggestion, and you categorized this conversation as constructive criticism. And I, I think it was, it is, it's a constructive conversation about, you know, it takes a village to, to make things better. And I, I appreciate that term very much so. But no, I think that's a great idea about putting names on boards. As far as, I know that's not an issue in terms of, you know, legal wise or anything we have it for council, and I think we have our term expiration as well on, on council, on our website as well. So I think it's a nice suggestion, and definitely discuss it, discuss it with the rest of council, but I don't see that to be a bad suggestion. Meredith, anybody else, do you have any input about that or thoughts?
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in. Hi Nikki, how are you? Thank you for joining on today. I'm, you know, this is my first meeting, everyone, so thank you for, for joining. I, I'm liking what I'm hearing, is this is the stuff that we need to hear as a community, so we can look into this. As your council representing you, people all, to make these types of changes. So Nikki, we were definitely looking into this and, and make that, and make that so.
So not, not to cut council off, I'm, I'm gonna actually ask George Morris, our solicitor, to intervene in here, Nikki, just so. I don't have a problem providing the names, you know, but I want our solicitor to go over that, you know, emails that zoning board members receive prior to a public hearing.
Exactly, that's, I have no problem with the names being out on the board, and I think somebody just put up in the chat. All you have to do is read the minute, you can see who's on the boards, but that's not.
That's not transparent.
It's not transparent, I understand that, but.
School boards have their folks' names listed.
Yeah, that's fine. The, I think the names can go up, but as far as email addresses, that wouldn't be appropriate for members of the public to contact members of the board directly outside of a public hearing. The, the, when you have a public hearing, like the Wawa application, you're making a record. And then that record could be challenged and, and brought to a superior court. And everything has to be consolidated in that record. So if a member of the public wanted to express their opinion, they're certainly allowed to do that. But if they're just sending an email, it would not become part of that record. And the applicant would not have the ability to cross-examine that person, and it's not under oath. So there's lots of issues, like I think just off the top of my head, why just straight emails are not a good idea for the township, because it does create liabilities for those boards.
And I don't, I don't want that for sure, so thanks for answering that question. But maybe perhaps, maybe it would be, it's better stated that if people have questions prior to these meetings, that could be answered by the township, then perhaps on the website, it should be directed to Meredith or to whoever they're supposed to.
Sure, there's a zoning, there's zoning board secretary and planning board secretary, and their information is on the website. They, they would be the people to direct all questions to, because if it's about, you know, what a site plan would look like or any type of reports that the traffic engineers or regular engineers have done, they would be the ones to provide the information to, to the resident for the board. But I can tell you that we are revising our website, you know, as, as we speak, I had a meeting on it today. So, I mean, I love the suggestions, you know, we're even going to try and make it more easy for pending applications to be seen on the zoning and planning board site. So everybody, you know, has access to that as soon as, as soon as the final version is, is ready to be released. So like, we will move forward with putting the names on there, but like the solicitor said, I think contacting board members outside of a public hearing could potentially be a high liability for the township in a lawsuit.
That's great. I don't, I, I just think that my biggest concern and request is more transparency of who serves on the boards. And I think with just revamping the website and adding the names, and maybe their terms, so people know, like, you know, this is when this one expires or whatever. Joe said, everybody is on the loop, because that certainly has not been the case as long as I've been an adult.
No, and it, it's a great suggestion too, because we also have the applications for the different board positions. So we'll, we'll definitely put when terms are expiring, so then people, so then residents know if there's even an expiring term on that board during that year. So it's a great suggestion. I, I will absolutely, we'll, we'll get that up and that change.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to see if I, sorry, I have two pages of people. I just want to go to the second page to see if.
Meredith, there's a couple of people in the chat who have said they've raised their hand.
Harriet Helen.
I am.
Hi, hi, Harriet.
Good evening. I would just like to follow through on what Mr. Katz said. I liked his suggestion of the pipeline, and my thinking was that hopefully, where you, when you put the names of the people, as Nikki suggested, there can be somewhere where it says, if you're interested in a position, make application. And possibly during the year, people can be interviewed, and you can let them know that, you know, you've received their application, hopefully you can interview them. And also there won't be any inconsistency. It feels like there's been, some people are interviewed, some people aren't. And I can understand hurt feelings, having been involved in many boards before. But then, if you do have the pipeline, as, as Brian Katz suggested, you'd, you'd come into office with a list of people that have already been interviewed and might meet your needs, especially if, you know, the, the township manager hasn't changed. So I, I think that would be a good thing. It's also a way of people in the community knowing what's always, what's available to them and what the process is, which we have not known until now. So I thank you greatly for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Kramer?
Yes, Meredith, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, first, I'd like to congratulate and welcome the council to Mount Laurel Township. Secondly, I have served on a zoning board, this will be my 13th year. And one of the things we are told by our attorney is that we can only consider information at the hearing. So by providing emails to the board members would sort of defeat that purpose. As a matter of fact, I remember one time, I go out and visit all the applicant properties just to get an idea of the neighborhood, to see what's going on. And I remember one time I got into a discussion with one of the applicants at the site. And as a result of that discussion, I had to recuse myself from sitting in on that particular application. So just be aware that the zoning board members are judges. There's seven of us, and we're different from planning board. We're really not allowed to discuss the applications with each other. And we come to our decision individually as far as voting. So just be aware of that. It would make it very difficult if, you know, people could just send emails and try to influence us and all, because again, we can only, we can only make our decision based on the evidence and the facts and all that's brought to us in that particular he, here on Zoom, or if we're in a municipal court. Saying that, Meredith, I just have a quick question. Some of my neighbors are concerned a little bit, they were conveying to me about the traffic light that will be going in. First of all, do you know approximately when it might be going in?
No, the bid, the bid was awarded, and we still need to have a pre-bid meeting with the contractor. So, you know, COVID has slowed some things down. But as soon as we have that pre-bid meeting, I'll have more information as to when the project's going to start.
Okay, do you think it'll be this year?
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely this year.
And, yeah, the, the other concern they have, as a matter of fact, one of them suggested this, I thought it was a pretty good idea. But, you know, we were talking about traffic backing up, or an academy going towards church.
Which I did speak to the engineer and ask them to take a look at, Alan. I, I asked them to take a look at it prior to us having the pre-bid meeting in case any changes needed to be made to the bids back.
Okay, well, here's one suggestion. I don't know if you want to consider it or not, but the intersection of South Gate and Farnwood, right there, right before the Union Mill Road. Can they put like some sort of grids of some sort, so that traffic, when it does back up, that people won't block the intersection, so that residents can get out without having to worry about, you know, the line of going right through the intersection?
I'll talk with the, the engineer, you know, and make sure he, he looks into that when he's reviewing the plan.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much, and again, congratulations and welcome new town council members. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Andrew, wanted to speak again?
He lowered his hand.
Yeah, I've lowered my hand up. Sorry, I was going to address with Alan, explaining the zoning board that they are quite limited in what they can do.
Sorry, I didn't see that you lowered your hands. Thanks. I don't think I see anybody else, so let me just take one more double check on the second page. Don't, I don't see anybody else, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to go to comments by council. Meredith?
I just wanted to let the public know, we went live with, the township now has a walk-up window for residents due to COVID. It's really nice, you, it's right by the drop-off boxes, but you, it's fully staffed with a staff member. You can go and you can pay your taxes, you can get a marriage license, you can get a construction permit. And it's, it's basically like a drive-up window. It's the type of window that you would see at like at a Walgreens. So there's, you know, there's a microphone, but there's, it keeps everybody safe due to COVID, but also allows the public to have interaction with the township employee, so that, that opened today.
Excellent. What, what were the hours for that?
It's the same hours and minutes, we're voting 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
George?
Thank you. I, I'm jumping off script here for a second. Some of you know I am a board member for the American Red Cross. And I just want everybody to know that there's a food drive going on right now. And the food drive will help fill the pantry at the joint base Maguire Dix Lakers. So if anybody wants to participate in said drive, please contact me, and I will give you all the information you need, as well as the drop-off locations, or if you can't drop it off, I will come find you. So, I appreciate that.
That's excellent. Thank you. Send me that information, I'm in.
I will. Maybe, maybe the mayor could post it to the mayor's page.
That'd be great. Outside of that, anything else?
No, no, we have some stuff for executive session tonight, so I'll be able to talk to you there.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, thank you for the comments, constructive criticism. It's, it's good to hear that we can do things better. I want to thank the former council members, Erwin Edelson, Kurt Fulcher, and Linda Bobo for your years of service. I do appreciate what you did for the township as I'm getting up and running with learning. I do appreciate that you work for the township, and I wanted to let you know that I thank you. I'm glad to see renewables coming into our town, more and more of them, like the, the solar fields that, putting them on commercial buildings, so, which will allow people who rent to be able to take advantage of lowering their, their bills. And to see us moving away more and more from fossil fuels, moving more and more to renewables is a good thing. So I'm glad we're seeing that in our town. And I hope everyone stays safe, has a great rest of your evening, and stay well. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilwoman Janjewa?
Karen, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. I look forward to seeing all of you in the future. And contest the constructive criticism and any concerns that you have, voicing those and letting us know, because that's the only way we can move forward and make sure that we're doing everything that we promised that we would do. Transparency is key, and we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. So if you feel like we're not, then thank you for speaking up and letting us know. I'm also really excited about the solar panels, very green light, Karen, I'm from California. And Frank, you're, Francis, I'm sorry, your suggestion sounds very interesting too. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that and discussing it. But thank you, everyone, for joining, and please stay safe, continue to stay safe.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilman Mustakis?
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you again. First of all, I want to congratulate our, our youngest mayor, Steve. We're all very proud of what you have done for this town. And Kareem, our deputy mayor, in the last two years. So I want to applaud you both for leading the way for the rest of us that have just recently joined council. Very, very proud moment. I also want to thank everyone on this, on this Zoom call. I know things have been very different for our, our world, our society, and our hometown in the last, in the last year. I'm, I'm, you know, please be safe out there. Hopefully everyone can get on and get your shots and do whatever it is that you need to do to, to be safe. I also concur the statements of Councilwoman Karen Cohen in regards to the prior council. Thank you for your days of service. This, this is, you know, a job that does take a lot of time from our other daily lives and routines. You know, I want to, I want to also send a thank you to Meredith, who runs the day-to-day operations and keeps us afloat. Very knowledgeable, wonderful woman who has really steered all of us, prior council and new council. And I also want to say the same to George Morris, who has done so much for our town and continues and will continue to do so. So there's a lot of love there. Look, we want to be transparent. If you have questions, please bring them up. We are here for you. We're here to take this town to the next level and to help this town grow, help the businesses, and help our community. So once again, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for being a part of this.
Thank you, Councilman. Deputy Mayor Pritchett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone that participated tonight. We thank you for your input. It's communication like this that helps us make the change that needs to be made. We definitely want to move forward and correct areas that need to be corrected. So thank you for giving us your feedback. We truly appreciate it. Also, remember, do what we need to do to continue to be safe. We're dealing with a, a dangerous virus, and we must make sure that everybody do their part to make sure that we all are safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So again, to echo everything everyone was saying, you know, transparency is, is key to this, to this new council. Not only do we run for a public office, touting it and wanting this, I mean, so this, this process, this new process, I think would be fantastic, and I appreciate the great dialogue and everybody that joined us. I think it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to make the change that, that have been needed. And I think this is one of the, the many changes I think we can look forward to. So I appreciate that from everyone. Food drive happened over the weekend. The Rankokas Methodist Church, fantastic food drive. And, and Karen, Councilwoman Cohen was, was big on broadcasting it to everybody, about participating. She did an excellent job. Our firefighters, Mount Laurel firefighters, incredible amount of food. Karen, how much, you said a pallet full of food?
The whole back of the van was full, and they, and they also gave a check along with Barlow Buick to, to the church, so they can use it appropriately. It was, it was a fabulous food drive.
Yeah, it really was, and they always do a great job. So if you're ever, I think it's every Wednesday or every other Wednesday that they're collecting food. If you're ever in the neighborhood and want to drop off some canned goods, non-perishable items, that, that'd be wonderful. And Mount Laurel's pro firefighters local, 4E 408, they were fantastic as well, and they, so they really stepped up to the plate. So I just want to thank everybody for doing so, and I hope everybody stays safe out there. And with that, I'm going to ask for, and I'm sorry to ask, to go into a closed session?
21-R 47, resolution authorizing a closed session of the Township of Mount Laurel discussed pending or anticipated litigation, contract negotiations, and/or personnel matters.
I move that we approve Resolution 21 dash R dash 27, 47, sorry.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Pritchett?
Hi.
Councilwoman Janjewa?
Hi.
Councilman Mustakis? Councilman, I just need to unmute you.
Sorry about that. I, my apologies.
And Mayor Stagwick?
Okay.
And Mayor, just for the public's record, we won't be coming out to take clue, to take any action. Anybody that would like to stay on is more than welcome to, but I will have to put you in a. Anybody that would like to stay on is more than welcome to, but I will have to put you in a waiting room. But we won't be coming and taking any action after closed session.